Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the work session of the Mayor Council for the town of Berlin. Today is Monday, February 13th, 2023. This evening's work session is the first of probably a few work sessions for us to work toward developing a new multi-year plan for the LDC, which is the Local Development Council, which is an advisory group that oversees the funding for our local impact grant. So I know it's a lot of things in one, but it's basically the money that the town receives as a revenue share from the casino. Previously, those funds were used to pay back the construction of the police department and that land acquisition so that we could build the new police department. That was paid off in September of 2022 or paid back to the general fund. So now we're in the process of determining a plan for how we're going to use the future use of those funds. So with that being said, one of the topics that we are going to be considering this evening during the work session, something that we need to work through as well as during our general session, is the law enforcement officer's pension system. But please note that this discussion for the multi-year plan is bigger than just LEOPS. It's going to include some items that we would like to see as it relates to the entirety of those funds. But just so that we're up to speed on the LEOPS front, because that is a big chunk of our discussion, there is a staff report from our Human Resources Director, Kelsey Jensen. So we'll just go over the high points of that, if you don't mind, Kelsey, and then we'll lead into the other documents.
Sure. So as the staff report mentions, the Town Administrator, Mary, and then Police Chief Arnold, we met with Maryland State Retirement and discussed the results of the study as well as how we move forward. So they said that a decision must be made by March 1st on whether or not you guys are going to approve the pursuing of LEOPS and that we had to have a minimum of 60% of active on the payroll officers that are in favor of moving forward with LEOPS, which, as I mentioned in here, we had 100% vote in favor. And at that point, they still can decide if they, for some reason, were not interested. They don't have to enroll even if you guys decide to move forward with LEOPS. So I just want to make sure that's known, but I don't see, yes, each individual, which I don't think anyone in here is not planning to forward with that if we do that. But yeah, and then once we are in the system, that decision's irrevocable. All new hires have no choice. They do go into the LEOPS system. So following the work session, we would need a written motion approving the enrollment. Maryland State Retirement would then draft a resolution that must be approved by Berlin in order to participate. And then they said that after that point, they would meet with us in person as well as the officers to go over the differences in the systems and finalize each individual's Financial impacts, there is a report attached, graph, not a graph, I'm sorry, just a chart showing the difference in the cost from current. If we were fully staffed with 14 sworn officers, we would see an increase of $230,000 between our current system and the cost of LEOPS. So $230,790 would be if we were fully staffed. The only other thing I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of is that Maryland State Retirement bills December of each year. So they bill based on July 1st to June 30th, but we wouldn't get the bill till December of 2024 if we were to move forward with LEOPS for FY '24. So that's the only thing you'll have to think of the financial community as a top priority. And I think moving forward with this would be the best thing we could do for Berlin and our police department. So other than that, I don't know if you guys have any questions. I also attached a 10-year history of the percentages for LEOPS. If you go under participating governmental units, it's the law enforcement officer pension system. So you can just see how those percentages have progressed, just to give you an idea of, you know, in 10 years, it's changed 6%. But that's really all I have unless you have questions. I'm sure Arnold probably has some to add to that, so.
I do. Do we have any questions for Kelsey as it relates to the staff report?
That invoice, that would be due December of 2024. Based on this sheet, would that be the 30th period of 29 hours?
It would be 300, if we were to go with FY '24, it would be $339,000 just for the LEOPS, yes. And our current would be $103,000 just for the sworn officers, so.
If December bill was actually be what we're in this system they're wearing right now, it would not be an increase for the December bill.
Yeah, this, yeah, not this year, we would not see an increase. It would be our normal bill.
We're in '24.
Yes, December '24, we would see, December of '24. We're in '23.
Right, FY '25?
Yeah, yeah, FY '25, yeah. But December of '24 is when we would get the increased bill with the LEOPS included. Yep.
Chief, do you, I don't know how to exactly ask this. This is based on 14, so do you foresee in the future expanding your force to more than 14?
I would hope so. Again, history tells us how fast we're actually growing. In 2000, we roughly had 3,200 residents, under 3.0 square feet, and now we're at 5,004.2 square miles. So just with the building of one development, you know, we had 4,000 people, and that's growing itself. The addition of something like Wool Farms and Arby's being open 24 hours, talking about Wool Farms, you know, really there does affect the manpower staffing, so.
So just like everything, the staff growth is dependent on the growth of the town?
Should be. We actually had 15 at the time when we talked about 3,200, and we actually have less now. So with that group of over 1,800, we actually lost one position in there.
And that's, that's not, that is not geranium to just the police department, but all departments will grow proportionately based on the growth of the town.
Chief, in your report to us, you indicated you have a couple officers out on medical leave. How would the transition work for them?
Again, they're still, you know, in the same system, and they would have the same opportunities in the force.
So then they could instantly take advantage of the LEOPS program?
That is correct.
You do have to be enrolled for a month before you can retire, so it would be at least, I guess, what would it be, August?
August.
Yeah, August 1st, yeah.
Right.
So, Sarah, again, Kelsey?
You must be an active member in the new system for at least one month before you can retire. So if someone on the force today, just if we went with LEOPS, they could say August 1st that they would like to retire and participate with the LEOPS program. They can't do it July 1st, it has to be a month in the system, so if we had anyone at that much.
Keep in mind that in order to do that, they would have to have been in the state retirement system already.
Oh, yeah.
They're not retired, I know that we know this.
Yeah.
There are folks that are maybe watching this that need to know that this is not a retirement system after one month.
No.
This is years of service equaling the threshold within that retirement system.
Right. It would stop to meet the eligibility to retire, but they could within one month.
So under the state program, you can't retire until you have 30 years of service, but LEOPS, it's 25, is that right?
It's not 30. That system actually is the 90 rule that we discussed. So again, a person that would have had...
Your age 67 with...
Right.
It's a combination of years plus age. Plus age, okay.
Right, so 58, that means you have to work 32 years before you get a check.
The challenging part is like bringing in somebody younger into this new system where it's age plus years of service.
Right.
It could be a long time before they're suitable to retire under that system. Is that correct?
Correct. And even hiring some older people who come in and don't have the years of service, we have one person that's to my left that'll have to actually be 71 years old. So doing the math, we're not going to have anybody working those kind of, you know, years.
It's a long time.
Yes.
Chief, do you foresee, I've read where in some departments where the LEOPS is instituted, we see uptick in retirements that occur earlier. Do you foresee, how many officers do you foresee taking earlier retirement than they would have previously planned?
Easton went to a 22-year retirement system, and what they found was some of the senior people actually did retire, but that was incentive for people that they didn't come in because they got their soul advancement. And that's a big plus for retention. If someone is not seeing a light and they're like, I'm going to have to be a police officer with no spousalities for the rest of my career, that's going to be a little harder to retain.
Right. How many officers now would, would, would qualify for retirement if we would go in this, go into this system after that month?
Anyone that's 50 years old. So that's the first start. And then anyone that actually has 25 years of service instead of the, you know, 90 rule. Only two, three, four people have over 25 years of service. Correction, nine.
Five. Five, no, same.
Five. So it's... You missed it. You.
Probably who we didn't count.
He's not going anywhere.
All right. Any other questions regarding the staff report or anything we've talked about so far? All right, let's get, okay.
No, no, but throughout, in looking at the ages that these individuals would retire in this system that we're currently in, we're talking about health. Again, how many people want to be a patrol officer at 58 years old and probably do the job of, you know, dealing with someone who's 20 years old and chasing or whatever you have to do to effect an arrest? We talk about working on claims, again, they would constantly go up. So we have all those factors, including health insurance. The older that the actual group is, the higher rate of insurance. More claims, the higher the insurance is. So again, those are some of those other factors in what we're discussing.
Didn't I read somewhere in something that the current average age of the department is 47 years old?
That's correct.
What's wrong with 47? I'm 47.
47 is not 25.
No, it is not.
Very young 47 now.
Especially for parents.
All right, let's, I did provide the council with just a review of some of our finances that were, with help being compiled by our Human Resources Director and our Finance Director. The summary, we've kind of gone over together, but the fiscal impact, the town of Berlin received the findings from the LEOPS study. And in the projections, just looking at a three-year span for FY '24 through '26, we can see that ranges between $236,000 in FY '24 to about $236,000 in FY '26. During those same periods, we're going to project, we've projected $418,000 in casino revenues for FY '24, $458,000 in revenues for FY '25, and $502,000 in revenue for FY ' '26. So there is a residual amount that can be allocated for that, which is really why we want to have this discussion, is what amount do we want to fund for potentially entering into LEOPS? And then what are kind of the ideas circulating with regard to some of the additional funding? I know some of you have prepared some documents, we'll get to those also, thank you for that. But we really want to get a sense of where and what is mine is, and then we can put some dollars and cents to that probably at a future work session at our next meeting, and then really start to iron out a solid plan that we can enact, hopefully by our first meeting in March. So with that being said, go ahead.
So, 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 Arna, by our first meeting in March?
Well, I was just about to say, March 1st.
But the deadline for participation in LEOPS this year is March 1st.
Correct. And I think it's very important that we separate these two things, being that our regular session agenda does include a motion to go into LEOPS. That is something that we need to do, if not tonight, that we definitely need to do by the next meeting, which is February, what, 27?
Which is two days before the deadline.
I'd really like for us to act on that this evening, but tonight's discussion...
But this isn't, you have to tell the regular session?
Correct. Tonight's discussion right now around the work session is the LDC multi-year plan. The reason we're focusing in on LEOPS is because we do have to find a way to pay for that at the end of the day, right? And here, we're going to talk about some ways that we can potentially do that, and I would also like to hear from the group as to where your thoughts, minds are as it relates to this also. So I think one of the things that I've heard from a lot of folks on this council, as well as some folks that I've talked to, is if you allocate casino revenues for this, right? Casino revenues can be cyclical or go up and down during times of COVID or other things. We hope that doesn't come back to see us. But with that being understood, we need to have a financial plan for the town of Berlin moving forward. And I think it would be nice if we could enact something called a LEOPS stabilization fund. We have something like that within the general fund already. We have an example of this as it relates to our healthcare. And what we would do with this is put about $300,000 off to the side in a stabilization fund that would help absorb any changes in revenue. So if a given year, we only get $100,000, we could pull from this stabilization fund to be able to cover the additional cost of LEOPS without having to go into crisis mode within the general fund. So that's one thing I want us to think about as we consider our options this evening. And then I think it's also important to note, just so that nobody has to do math on the fly, potentially if we funded all of the additional cost of LEOPS, so to backtrack for a second to the table provided in Kelsey's staff report, when you look down at the bottom portion of that, it says difference between employee system and LEOPS. So you can see the current system is the second line item down, starting with $103,000 or $101,000, it says cost for current retirement, 101,651. And that's about what we currently pay. If you look down at the bottom of the chart, it says difference between employee system and LEOPS, and it shows $230,000. That's the additional cost of LEOPS that we're saying we would like to potentially fund in its entirety using LDC local impact grant funds. And if we did that, there would be a residual in FY '24 of $182,000 to reallocate for other things. And in FY '25, there would be $217,000 to reallocate, and in FY '26, there would be approximately $256,000 to reallocate. Now, keep in mind, these are projections, but understand that there is the ability to fund LEOPS and other things. So with that being said, I'll open it up.
Well, I just, I'm glad you kind of mentioned stabilization fund first, because I'd like to look at that or throw it out in this, in this work session as to the reserve fund, establishing that first, and then go talk about the other, the other part of the plan. And I'd like to throw out there that we have earmarked a million dollars for Town Hall, Public Works, and 100,000, I believe it was, for capital. I think that presenting it to the group that we unassign, reassign 300,000 of that to the, what are we going to call it, the LEOPS stabilization fund. I think that is a logical step at this point. It leaves enough for, as I understand it, we don't have any quotes or anything on Town Hall renovations, but it leaves amount of money there to get those, do repairs or renovations or whatever we decide to do with that, leaves money for the public works, and it does leave an additional amount for capital, which was the intent of the earmark to begin with.
Just to clarify.
I'd like to just throw that out there.
But just so that we're working with the numbers, 500 for Town Hall, 400 for Public Works, and 100 went into capital to be further assigned.
Well, this is just the reserve fund I'm talking about, the 300,000.
Right, right. I just wanted to make sure we were clear on the numbers there. And then the other thing is, is that the 300,000, the recommendation would be to use, so we paid off the casino or the police department in September. There is a buildup within that account, and there would be a little bit of a buffer between the time that the LEOPS bill would be due and the residual amount. That would be used for the 300,000 in stabilization. That way, it's not coming from capital, it's not coming from anywhere else.
Right, I mean, we talked about that at the beginning.
I'm just, I'm just making sure that you knew where that 300 was intended.
So that's my thing right now.
Thank you. Do you want to pull your table?
Yeah, I'd like to, Katie, if you pull my table up. So I took a different approach in order to pay for LEOPS. This is a 10-year plan for using the LDC funds, casino revenue. And basically, I projected out the revenues we would be coming in and some various projects we could use to use those funds for. At the bottom, it shows the remaining balance. If you notice that the top project is LEOPS pending LDC approval, and I have three numbers over three years, 150,000, 100,000, 75,000. This is something Councilman Green suggested that we decline it off of casino revenue. I didn't want to see LEOPS paid for from casino funding in perpetuity. In other words, it shouldn't go on forever. I think it becomes a payroll issue, like it is now with our state retirement. We build it into the police budget and pay for it that way. But I did include three years' worth of revenue to help assist paying for it. Any balance that we need to come up with to 236 in 2024 would be paid for by the general fund, and we build it into the budget. But I also listed several other projects, you know, we could build a community center, a public works building, sidewalks and paving for West Street, a budget for the beautification committee, we need another gas generator for the electric company, you know, it goes on and on. These are all projects we could do with this money. So I didn't want to see us tied up from one specific source. I think it's very important that it comes out of the general fund budget. So if anybody has any questions about what I presented here?
Yeah, I'm definitely more on that page than using, you know, relying so much on the casino impact grants. Again, the police department has received almost all of our casino impact funds today under the police department, which is obviously very valuable and needed. I'm on the same page as far as believing that it needs to be a general fund expense. Kicking the can down above, one thing, we do have the big unknown of whether or not LEOPS is going to be permitted use. I think we believe it will be, but we definitely know we're getting resistance on it. So this plan, I believe, instead of taking that large slump sum and causing real concern down the road, this diminishes it. I did support the diminished concept, thank you for taking that. It is something that I believe it kind of allows us time to matriculate the impact of the general fund every time. And I personally also like the idea of these casino impact grants, they're so valuable, spreading them out throughout the community to different uses, different areas, like, you know, that supports different public works building, all of that, community center, these are different areas of the town, West Street. So I really like a diversified approach to using these funds as well. I just think it makes sense, it gets the better of the whole town. And, you know, when we commit to something like LEOPS, it's committing to you all, but also committing, knowing that the budget is something that we're going to have to make it work, you know? It's important for us to, I feel like it's, you know, be big girls and like, let's go ahead and we have to do this. If we can get a little help with the casino impact grant over the course of time, that would be a benefit. So I support that concept of diversifying the funds, casino impact grants, to different areas of town, different projects. I think it also addresses a concern that we're hearing from the LDC chair. So I feel like it's a compromise, you know? My life, the compromise is like the secret sauce, you know? So we have the mayor's proposal, this is kind of a, I like a middle, a middle ground. I feel like I live in the gray area of life, you know? So it's a middle ground, it's an opportunity for us to, you know, accomplish a lot with these valuable dollars, including, of course, LEOPS.
Let me say, let me say that I think that the commitment to LEOPS is actually bigger than the folks that are standing in this room. LEOPS would be a commitment to our community. Our community came in here and shared with us how important they felt LEOPS, and I'm going to say stabilizing our police department is to them. I do believe in a diversified approach also, and I agree with Jay when he says LEOPS should become, and I want the public to hear this, LEOPS should become an expenditure associated with staffing and the general fund. I don't believe that casino funds should be used in perpetuity for this endeavor, but it needs to roll into a general fund expenditure. However, I am concerned with March 1st. I'm concerned with being able to participate in this retirement system as soon as possible. And if casino funds would allow us to do that now, and we work toward the general fund, having this become a general fund expenditure, I think that would be a good thing. But folks, we need to, in my opinion, we really need to do this LEOPS thing as soon as possible.
I think the immediate need, which was, what the mayor was talking about, was setting up this reserve on the stabilization fund, 300,000. But Kelsey Norris had a suggestion, we have the money from renovation program to do that, so we wouldn't need the town's money necessarily to do that.
No, I understood Jack to say, use that fund for the stabilization fund.
To create it.
Right, yeah, that's, that's exactly.
Rather than...
Less than the LEOPS. Less than the LEOPS, and that would, we have that...
I mean, rather than casino.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of abbreviation. Yeah, that was the, that was the suggestion, was to take the already, out of the surplus and put that, create that, not, we don't have to use LDC funds for it, we don't have to put it in the general fund, it's creative.
And then we have a full year.
And then we have a full year, and I just wanted to, I mean, thank you, Jay, for doing this, I mean, this was awesome. There's other things on here that I think should be mentioned that are possible, playground park upgrades, the wastewater treatment plant, you know, just general utilities and capital for our enterprise funds and all that. I think it's possible to, you know, it's definitely good to look into this. And I do have a concern with the staggered approach and the turning it over to general fund, but I do like the diversity of it.
My question, you said that currently there is a little, there's a small amount of funds that are left over in the account after having paid off the police department. What did you say that amount by? Did you know the number?
I got that number from Natalie, it's 400,000 at the end of the year.
Yeah, so I...
That was the one I did right there, the 400 is what's left right there.
There should be, well, there should be, keep in mind, this is a projection, right?
For sure.
So there should be enough money in the residual or leftover amount from local impact grant funds by the end of this fiscal year to cover the $300,000 that's proposed for the stabilization fund. Now, this is all pending LDC approval or agreement, there is a process.
Well, that was a question, I guess that's where I was going, was because we have fulfilled the debt that was already due for the department itself, can they, would they have an issue with that remaining balance going towards the stabilization?
Well, and I think that David Gaskell, Town Attorney, I think you provided a summary as to the binding portion of the LDC. as to the binding portion of the LDC.
I did.
Can you summarize that for the group?
They, they are an advisory committee. They do not, they do not have the authority to dictate to the council where the money is spent, how it's spent.
The, the rules governing how it can be spent are defined in legislation.
That's correct.
And just, I think Councilmember Green mentioned the LDC chair pushing back on this and finding a compromise. I think that it's important to note that there has been pushback, but no supporting documentation that shows that this is not a applicable use.
Right.
Everything, including from the Department of Legislative Services, which is an hapless, has indicated that there is no carve out for pension systems, there is no exclusion for LEOPS, this falls squarely in a public safety expenditure. So I think that's important to note.
It is, and I think, I was, because I was referring to a compromise being that not all Casino Impact Funds goes to LEOPS.
For sure, for long term, all of it.
Right.
So, so my thought is, I mean, this from the girl who hasn't been present for a minute, but I've been paying attention as I'm playing nurse to my sick child, but as I watch this and I pay, and I'm looking at this, my thoughts are, I'm looking at this, Jay, great job, I think the mayor, I think you too, your heads are in the right place as far as the stabilization fund, mayor and Jay. I'm looking at Jay's weaning away from the casino funds and turning this into a, a, take me back.
General fund.
Exactly, a general fund, but I was about to make a, totally, turn, maybe this is a general fund, regular, or a regular pocket within the general fund. I think, I don't know if three years is long enough. That, that's my only concern. I don't, and I'm not saying that it needs to be indefinite or whatever, but I, I mean, if, if we're talking about possibly negotiating, and I don't want us to get into a place where we're ever, I mean, let's be real here, fellas, seriously. You, we've sat here and talked budget for years and people, the town is struggling as far as citizens with budgets and budgets and increases mean, what does that mean? Say it with me, fellas, tax increase, right? So your citizens are going to have a hard time swallowing this budget, and I'm not saying that they're wrong for doing that, but they're going to have a hard time swallowing a new line item in the budget, even though everyone completely, and I'm, listen, I am 120% in support of LEOPS, but I'm also being realistic as to what the people, what the citizens of Berlin are going to, how they're going to swallow in 2028, when their taxes, I don't know what taxes are going to be for the next several years, I don't have a crystal ball, but when there is a true tax increase, and it's not, I'm not saying it's going to be great to, to go along with this and they're complaining. I don't want the jeopardy of anyone that this pertains to to be in the hands of that, you know what I'm saying? I don't want this to be within somebody else's control. So I would think, why not take this out a little bit further, just a little bit, I'm not saying it has to be indefinite, but take it out a few more years as far as the casino fund goes, to allow it to become that much more sturdy, because I don't want anyone to ever look over the, be constantly looking over their shoulder and wondering when the day is going to come, where, where the citizens or the town or the diocese decides, you know what, we're not going to a tax increase, and it then affects them directly. I don't want that to happen to them. So.
And I think that's a valid point, but I think we're also maybe honing a little too far into one particular item. I think that what I would like to hear, and it's nice to hear and see Jay's ideas of some other things that this could go toward, the reason that we didn't produce a plan like this for everybody was because we've never talked about as a group what other things we would like to fund. So before we started putting numbers on a board and saying this is how it's going to look, we really wanted to hear from everybody to kind of get a sense of what other things would you like to cover, where do you want to see this money spent? And then from there, we can discuss the finer points of how much is going to go to this category versus the other. So I think what we can all agree on is that, and if we can't, please stop me, that I think we have some funding that's capable of being used for LEOPS. I think we have some funding that's capable of being used or diverted for a stabilization fund for that cost. I, I would like to hear some of the other ideas as it relates to the funding.
Well, I think that.
Well, for me, I'm concerned with, in addition to what, in addition to this most inclusive list developed by Jay, and I do believe that this is a good list, to add to this, I would like to see something done with the mapping of the utilities in the town of Berlin. And I'm not only talking about water or store, I'm talking about all utilities, because we, we have to know and feel comfortable with, with what is under our streets. And that concerns me, that concerns me not knowing definitely what's under our streets. And, and I would also give some consideration to, to funding the EOMS and fire department in this list.
Now, just.
I did put in 45,000 for the ambulance money requested.
Yeah.
And so that would keep them in supply of ambulances as usual.
And then, just so that, and we've talked about other things with the fire company as well, and for the fire company, EOMS, like a vehicle that can come down and respond to town events, which I think might be a higher priority need in some ways because of the size and scope of our events. The other thing is that, to your point about the mapping, we sat in on the meeting with the ESRGC, who is the folks that did the housing study for this, and does like the GIS work. We have staff internally that also work with that, but we would be seeking this upcoming fiscal year, a retainer with them of maybe, maybe around $20,000. And that puts us in the front of the line. They said that they have examples of other institutions or municipalities that have done stuff like that, that puts them in the front of the line, but they tap other funds first before they tap our funds. So it may be a given year where we might put $20,000 forward and they might only tap a couple thousand of it. But I think to your point, mapping our infrastructure and doing some more work internally with GIS and understanding where things are spatially is, is huge. But I, I think that a safe number to associate with that would be about $20,000, just so you know. Now, it's not going to cover everything in one year, but it would definitely start to wiggle away at that. Your vote?
And, I mean, and just what I was going to say was, I mean, I think that the, I'm not exactly sure of the timeline of what this is for the LDC, but obviously.
The timeline as to when the.
Well, I mean, that funding is, I mean, in regards to LEOPS, that funding is kind of pivotal. I mean, I know we have a really year, well, actually, I guess technically a year and a half to two, but not that, not that we're waiting that long for LEOPS. What I'm trying to say is, as soon as they find out, that is going to affect a little bit this multi-year plan. And when they say multi-year, how many are they actually looking for, three to five?
They didn't define multi-year plan, which is why in this, in the memo that I sent to all of you, I pulled that out three years. And I think they ask for this each year, it's an annual report.
Okay.
But I think multi-year plan, when we span three fiscal years, that's, that's multi-year.
And then I was just going to, if VP Burrows doesn't mind, I was going to piggyback on his mapping, and of course my, my, my thing on stormwater, you know, the definite, definite thing we can add on to this going forward.
You told me about.
For the next work, yeah, on the, on the multi-year plan. And for the next work session, would it be possible to have a member of the LDC as a guest?
What's the purpose? We know their position. What's the intended result?
So you're going to have that in March, right?
The, well, the, the goal would be to have another subsequent work session on the 27th, which is our next meeting.
Okay.
And then take the developed plan and put it on the agenda for the 13th. Which doesn't mean that we're not going to get it sent back to us with comments and then have to even hold a public hearing and follow other things, so it's, it's going to be.
Yeah, look at this as a working document, you might present it to them, but in the year we review it and we change, we alter it as needed. So it's, it's not carbon stone.
And the reason that that wasn't done previously is because it was already a committed amount to, and an intended result, right? So I think that what you can start to see is, this comes up every September, and we get it, I think, I want to say at least 30 days out, where they want that report compiled. There's no reason we can't revisit this and say, hey, look, this is where we're at, these are where our projections are, these are some of the things you wanted to fund, do we want to try and speed that up, or do we need to kind of push that back a little bit further?
It's just an easy format.
Or has there been a change of heart, you know?
So I guess I was a little bit confused, I think, that the motion will be coming in in about an hour. And I'm just a little uncomfortable with approving something that we're not exactly sure how we're going to pay for it yet. I mean, even at this point, can we come to, as this group, how we're going to fund LEOPS? Now, I'm on the support motion, but we, somebody being nice and responsible, I think of us to have a plan of how we're going to do it. And I think, exactly what you're saying with the, yeah, and I think we probably aren't prepared tonight to decide, you know, how this whole multi-year plan, which we're definitely not going to be, but could this group come together with a philosophical approach at least of how we're going to fund LEOPS before we approve it in a motion later tonight?
Mayor, can I?
Yes, please. And I actually have a question for you too. Can you please explain to the group in your opinion, you know the numbers somewhat better than all of us, can you explain if we were to take the approach of spreading it out over a couple of years, what the implications would be on our financial position?
I guess my little plans will answer your question as I can, don't take it any other ways, that I'm kind of telling anybody what to do here, but as I was going to the work session, my mind was set that the main, the main point today is number one, point is to vote to participate on March 1st, which we'll go into mayor council session in a little bit. And number two is to take advantage of fiscal 23 impact grant amount that we have as of right now in the checking account and allocate, I say 300,000, this for sure we're going to have, and set aside in the LEOPS reserves. So fiscal 23, the full amount set aside, that will give us a backbone or some sort of reassurance that if we're going forward and something happens to LEOPS, we have a step behind, we have a year ahead of us, that we are pretty sure that we have enough to cover the several bill when it comes to the door. Then going forward to set amount, and I'm, this is just my suggestion, take 150 to 200 fixed amount each year from the impact grant and put aside for the next year LEOPS. The residual from the delta between what we receive and the local impact grant per year minus what we set aside this fixed amount to create an expenditure report and present it to, for the approval as of the multi-plan, with different projects and community participation. I printed a page here, and it's very broad what we can utilize the impact grant, infrastructure improvement, facilities, public safety, sanitation, economic and community development, including housing, and other public services and improvements. Now, by reading this, we can include a lot, but again, that has to be approved by, can we utilize it for electric, can we use it for the stormwater, can we build a water tower? So, but allocate, what I have, I feel that allocating the full amount of impact grant is not going to be acceptable or favorable, but allocate a certain amount and allocate the residual to other projects, I think it's a better approach.
The, the one thing that I want to add to that, even if we want to use the 300, I think we're going to need to show a multi-year plan in order to get that approved, because they've been, the LDC has been pretty firm on the fact that in order to reallocate any other funds, and I agree with them, we need to have an established plan. So I, I think that our finance director is heading there ahead with the 500, or with the $300,000 for the stabilization, and it does give us that longer window. And I would almost say that, when, when's our first bill due?
Oh.
December 2024.
Yeah, December 2024.
It might even be wise, I think, to push our timeline for the multi-year plan out a little bit further and maybe not submit that until after we've had a couple work sessions, so that, I, I'd really like for all of us to have our heads around the numbers with the budget, because I think there you're going to see what I'm, what I'm already feeling in my head is that money's tighter than what we think. And if we're going to move on the compensation stuff, which I want us to move on the compensation stuff, we're not going to have this extra $100,000 or $150,000 or $200,000 to wiggle when last fiscal year we increased with the assessable base, what, $140,000? I mean, ladies and gentlemen, I think we're going to be tighter than where we think we're going to be by the time this budget comes around. So it might be nice to see this in the scope of the entire picture before we make the decision on the multi-year plan.
So fiscal 23 slots revenues on our budget as of right now would be earmarked for LEOPS and you're just adding two words, the wellness and safety of the community. So what my advice is to take the fiscal 23 and set aside and then work towards the allocation of which.
But we're.
Fiscal 24 and go on.
We'll need LDC approval to do that, but.
Absolutely.
And now, what's, what would be wrong with Jack's idea of taking 300,000 from the renovation private budget?
I think it'd be important for you and everybody else to take a look at it downstairs or anything like that first.
I think there's something wrong with it, I think, yes, LEOPS is not in comparison to other projects as important, I think we just have to weigh in for this.
But can't we, I mean, even if that suggestion is taken, where we take some from the capital, wouldn't LEOPS be able to do that in, in, like safety? Can't they just basically reimburse the, that?
You're just moving it.
Yeah, we're just.
Just playing around where it's coming from.
That's what we're saying. We're just moving money because I don't need to cut you off.
No, no.
But my concern is, like, we have our town attorney and what looks like to us, we're going to get approval for this, to use LDC funds. But we don't have it yet.
He didn't say that.
You didn't do that.
Well, he didn't say.
What he said was it's an advisory board.
It's an advisory board.
Right.
At the same time, I think that.
I think what's important is, is that we're going forward. The main important part is to decide what we're going to do.
Well, exactly. And I think that since we have the earmarked capital right now, that it would be logical to take that and make that the reserve fund.
So may I suggest to put it as a Plan B?
You can call it a Plan Bravo or Plan Alpha or Plan Charlie, I don't know what you call it.
Point two, allocate the fiscal 23 impact grant to LEOPS reserve as a backup. If that's not going to go through and not approved, reassign the existing reserve from capital to LEOPS. That's the plan. And then Plan Three, raising the taxes, and Plan Four is what else is going to come up.
We have to think about that, but.
But our finance director is not incorrect, and you said Plan Alpha, Bravo, Charlie.
I did that for a shout out.
Charlie's pretty close to the tax rate, buddy.
That's my son, he's on tax rate.
Yeah. Your C options.
I like that idea, and I think that that's a, I think that's a reasonable route. That, that's.
I have a question. From, 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 from Council sheet, it says current payroll with vacancies.
Yes.
Is this only for the police department?
This is only for the police department and it includes 14 sworn officers, which we don't have, so I'm sure that the first dollar amount you're seeing is, it's not going to be that high.
So to repeat, it is a projection. That number is not fixed, it's got to be adjusted.
And it's only for the sworn officers?
The sworn officers, yes.
Now, in an effort to answer Councilmember Green's question, does anybody feel uncomfortable with the possibilities to fund LEOPS before we go into open session?
With the approach that was.
There are several options, but I'm saying, does everybody feel comfortable that there are at least pathways forward, that we're not going to be entering into something blindly without any possible way to fund it? Now, the finer points of how we're going to go about allocating or moving money.
Different layers.
Roll it in the.
But I'm going to guess.
I agree with that.
So can we, yeah, does anybody else have a different opinion? Okay. All right, good. We got about seven minutes, and I've heard from Dean and Jack about some other possible options. I do want to make sure that I hear from the rest of the group.
Well, I will throw out that, see, back in September, right, the new capital fees began, and I know that came out of, I'll just call it a study, I guess, Gene Holloway's study, right?
The CIRCA report.
Yeah, so I would like to see us consider a way to find out what that dollar amount is. The business is paying 40 bucks a month, it's $480 a year, citizens are paying, I'm rounding, it's $20 a month, $240 a year. Can we get rid of that and replace it with casino impact funds? We're talking about affordability, right? These dollars are hurting our citizens, we're hearing about it, I'm sorry.
The finance director, let's ask her back.
I think that's in the legislation.
No, no, it's to different things we talked about. We're talking about utility fund. We're talking about enterprise fund service fee imposed for future capital projects of the water and sewer improvements, and we're talking about general fund expenditure for LEOPS. So getting rid of the service fee from the enterprise fund is not going to.
I think Councilmember Green is asking whether LIG funds, so local impact grant funds, can be used for an enterprise one. Do we know the answer for that?
That I am not 100% sure. From the page that I see and from my own research and the UN, the expenditure from other municipalities, local impact grant stays in the general fund.
So that's something we can look at.
Right.
And see if there's some precedent somewhere else.
And that will also impact your multi-year plan, because you've got on here the electric generator and the water, wastewater treatment plant.
Right, I was just answering the question.
That was the request to the, to the county to ask and to see if they can approve a water improvement.
Right.
But that'd be good, because then we can figure out whether there's anything. I know it says infrastructure.
Yeah.
It doesn't say one way or the other, but it'd be nice to vet that out.
Those fees are the number one thing I've heard in my four months being here. And my.
Are you talking about new fees or?
The new, the new capital fees.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
And just so I know. I know that nobody likes paying, like, I don't like paying, and we all pay them because we're residents together. But I think the other thing to note is that we've been saved by ARPA funds, and what hurts worse than that nominal, what's the amount?
It's 26, and you add one.
I'm not saying that.
I'm talking about.
Yeah, I'm saying like, we're about the $20 range, maybe upwards to what?
Per month?
For a business or something like that?
Yeah, business is 39 to 50.
So, I mean, it's not, it's not nothing, but it, but it's when you take the cost of a water well, which was what, a million dollars, and divide that by how many customers?
A lot.
25, 20.
Do that math.
Right, no, I, if I was up here, I probably would have voted to support it, so I say that.
But that's the, I understand, it's a burden, it's, it's not going to, it's not going to be seen in many years. Right now, we're just setting it aside. Once the ARPA is going to run out, water and sewer infrastructures agent rapidly.
And ARPA's saving us for this moment, and that's allowing that capital fee to build up, hopefully where we need it to be. But I mean, I just wanted you to be aware.
Yeah, no, I do appreciate that, so it's just, if it can be divested, it's a possible solution.
So enterprise fund infrastructure uses. Okay, anything else from the groups?
Yeah, let me just say one thing. We have a lot of officers that proudly serve the town of Berlin, and I think they deserve a round of applause for all they do.
Anything regarding outside of this list, because I'm pretty inclusive.
That was an eye list. You should be good.
This is one to ask, you guys. Councilmember Nichols?
I don't have anything in addition to what's here, some of it is, I think it's good.
Now, reviewing some of your goals and things like that, Councilmember Horace, you had some improved communications for events and stuff like that, radios on your list.
I did.
I did get a price tag for those today, just for 20 of them, $140, something thousand dollars. So just so that our minds are in that direction as well. Yeah, I have the quotes, I'll share them, in that way everybody's telling.
Do we know what is happening with cell phone reception?
Well, we've asked for, so the question was, what's going on with the cell service as it relates to events? So we've been in communication, a lot of folks that we've seen the issue with have been Verizon. I've been in communication with their government affairs folks, we've tried to get something called COWs for a cellular on wheels and bring that in for events to help see if that makes a difference, because we're thinking that because there's such a strain on the system, when we pack downtown a bunch of people, nobody can send a text and, or make a phone call, and all you see is SOS on your phone, and it doesn't work. So we're trying to get the COWs, but it's like an act of Congress to get them. So we're still getting, trying to. We tried to get one for New Year's, but then New Year's event was rained out.
So this would just be on a, that might, that basis?
It would be a trial to see if improvements need to be made to the cell towers themselves to handle the freeze line.
And the COW would just kick it?
Well, the COW would be here acting as that cell tower during an event. Temporary, yeah, it would be there for that event, and then it would go. So hopefully we can find some resolution, but we're also, I think, as many of you have brought up, experiencing some trouble as it relates to communicating with EMS and police and everybody else during events, and there are other ways to improve communication also. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that we did get a quote for 20 of those radios, and I think it came to about $140, something thousand. So GIS, EMS, fire, possible infrastructure funds, stormwater radios, community center, Public Works Building, West Street or Street Infrastructure, beautification, more infrastructure in our utility funds.
Playgrounds.
Playgrounds, entertainment venues, and EMS. So I think that's pretty encompassing. We'll do some homework. Does the group feel like we want to revisit this at our next meeting, or do we want to push our timeline back a little bit so that we can see what the general fund looks like as far as the budget goes? I don't think we're really up against the time constraint to produce this multi-year plan. I think we've got a little bit of time.
I think, I think in the interest of, yeah, we're working through it, and of course, open meetings, if we can submit our ideas to Mary, the town administrator, and she could kind of co-lead them and send them back out.
What are you saying, ideas?
Like, take, take this document and then whatever we're going to.
Yeah, we're going to construct that.
And then it go back out.
We'll take care of making sure that the report gets.
Yeah, I mean, instead of a discussion, like, email, just kind of gets Mary to send it out.
If you have other items you would like to add.
But it's basically based on.
If you would like to add other things, yes, please send them, but it'd be helpful to probably just include the groups, so everybody knows where their minds are.
So to answer the question, I think a work session next meeting will be.
Okay. Okay.
That's good.
All right. Well, I think we're close to our timeline for 7 o'clock.
The 40 minute.
What's that? I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Okay, so is everybody okay with ending our work session?
Yeah.
All right. So the work session, the mayor and council for Monday, February 13th is included. We will return at 7:05 for the start of the general public session.